The next item on our list is the specialty program update. As you recall, we began the International Baccalaureate Program back in 2009 at Kings Fork High School. And then in 2010, we actually started the Pathways to Engineering at Nansman River. And this year, we began the Biomedical Program Specialty Program at Lakeland High School. It's really an honor and it's exciting to be able to share that we now have three specialty programs that students across the division can choose to attend. Mr. Doug Dewey is going to lead our presentation as far as an update on the specialty programs. I'll turn it over to Mr. Dewey.
Evening. Thanks for the opportunity to share our programs with you. You will hear from a number of staff members. We do have representation from the IB program again at Kings Fork High, Engineering at Nansman River, and also Biomedical at Lakeland. I also want to recognize some of our administrators who are here this evening. We have Mr. Wagner, Principal of Lakeland here this evening, Dr. Berg, Principal of Kings Fork High, and Mr. Milton, Assistant Principal from Nansman River. Mr. Macklemore was unable to be here this evening. The PowerPoints begins on page 15, but I also want to mention the brochures that are on pages 28 through 35 for all three programs. Just to give you a recap of what is happening currently, and then I'll turn it over. And we are going to do it in the order of program. We start with IB, so we will begin with IB and we'll end with Biomedical. But what's happening now, actually, two months ago, we had informational sessions at the high schools, each of the high schools. Many of our staff members here tonight, plus others, presented their programs. And of course, they also included some of their students in their presentations at each of the three high schools. We had students and parents attend all of the informational sessions from all of the middle schools. And currently, we have students in these programs from all of our middle schools. In some cases, we had parents and students come to the informational sessions that aren't currently our students. They came from other locations and settings to hear the information. The information and applications were made available to the parents those evenings two months ago, and we also placed the applications on site. So students and parents and teachers were busy completing those applications to have them turned in early January, which they did meet our January 9th deadline. All applications have agreements, teacher recommendations, and an essay that would be scored by a panel. So that process is taking place right now. The students will be notified March, April, in the spring. And in some cases, you may have had students apply to more than one program. That did happen last year. And when that happens, and if they were accepted into two programs, we need to make a phone call to a parent for them to decide. So that did happen, where we had a few that were selected by two programs. So at this time, I'm going to ask our staff to come forward. We're going to begin with the IB staff, and then Engineering, and then Biomedical.
Good evening, Chair Dubrinsky, Vice Chair Copeland, Dr. Whitney, and members of the school board. I'm the Coordinator for the International Baccalaureate housed at Kings Fork High School. And as was mentioned, we were authorized in 2009, December of that year. And then we had our sophomore class, which went on to become our first graduating class As you know, it is an international education that we are promoting because we wish to educate the entire student, the whole student, with a view on their going to college and having to be prepared in a liberal arts education. So we encourage all of our students who take the diploma to study English, history, math, science, a foreign language. They must also study a course called Theory of Knowledge, and they are able to choose an IB elective. So there you see a visual of the courses on the outskirts of the circle. And then on the inside of the circle, the Theory of Knowledge is required. That particular course is unique to the International Baccalaureate. They must also do an extended essay, which is a form of a research paper. They must, in addition, do community service, which is referred to as creativity, action, and service. All of these are required in order for them to become diploma students. We inspire them to become excellent critical thinkers. All of our essays are required through the assessments that we have, rather than multiple choice. The information is taught in a manner in which we encourage understanding other perspectives and global awareness. And then, of course, all of the courses end in an end of course assessment, which can determine whether or not they get the IB diploma, and also whether or not they get credit in college, as well as advanced placement. We also have an interdisciplinary instruction incorporated in everything we do, so all of the teachers work together to develop their curriculum. As has been mentioned, there are several courses in different subjects that the students can study, but we hope to have an impact on the entire school, not just a program within a school, but rather a program that will have a positive effect on the whole school. With that in mind, we have begun to develop our specific courses that other students within the building can take as singletons. Those courses would be in our sciences, so it could be chemistry, biology, physics, or environmental systems. It could be through mathematics. It could be visual arts, psychology, or music. We have also put forth two additional courses, one in theater arts and one in sports and health, so that the students can have choices as to what their IB elective can be, and that we can also encourage other students within the building to take some of the certificate Entrance into the International Baccalaureate is based on having a 3.0 grade point average. The students should have studied Algebra I at minimum, the first year of a foreign language. They get teacher recommendations, they sit for a writing prompt, and then I have an opportunity to meet them individually for a mini interview. Our current enrollment is around 152 students. That's in both the pre-diploma and IB program. It should be mentioned that the actual IB program takes place in grades 11 and 12. In the first two years, we spend our time, I guess one might say, encouraging the students to become better students, to learn study skills, to be able to handle the rigor of all college-level courses when they're in the 11th and 12th grade. So we have 52 freshmen, 46 sophomores, 21 juniors, and 33 seniors. I have gone out and done my recruitment for the middle schools, and at this point, we have several students from all of the middle schools, and indeed, some from private schools that have applied to be a part of the IB program. I mentioned earlier that one of the unique features of the International Baccalaureate is our interdisciplinary instruction. And here we have Ms. Sharon Greiner, who is the Lead for Sciences at Kings Fork, and she's going to talk about our Group Four project.
Group Four entails all of the science-related disciplines for the IB program. It is the vision of IB that science will explore all aspects of the natural world and the relationships between them. The Group Four project is one of the ways that we do that at Kings Fork High School. Group Four is an interdisciplinary collaborative project that is student-planned, student-performed, and student-assessed. It is also a requirement for all students enrolled in any of the IB sciences, be they diploma candidates or certificate students. There are three phases to the Group Four project. The first phase is the planning phase. We take all of the IB students that are enrolled in a science, and we get them together into a planning session, and we have them put into their group. So if they're a chemistry student, they're going to be paired up with a biology and environmental systems and a physics student in their group. Then we give them all of the equipment that we have available in the school, and we tell them where we're going. And they have two hours to come up with a viable field research project. Their question has to be approved by the instructors before they leave for the day, and they are expected to go out and do more background research prior to the day of execution. The second phase is the action phase. We take an all-day field trip. For two years, we went to Houghler Creek Wildlife Preserve in Northern Suffolk. This past year, we went to Little Island Sand Bridge. We take the kids out into the woods, basically, and set them free to do their field research project. They really get to see how scientists have to get in the mud and muck to get their hands dirty. And their projects vary from group to group depending on the location. One year, we had students picking up fecal samples and tracking bacterial loads in samples depending on the diet of the animals. We had students checking for salinity of the marshlands versus the lake, pH of the soil, depending on how close it is to a coniferous tree versus a deciduous tree. So they really get to get out there and just explore the world around them. It's very exciting to see. After that, the students come back to the school, they get together in their groups, and they analyze their data. If they've done their project well, they have lots and lots of data. So they have to crunch their numbers, draw conclusions, and really figure out, what does it mean? What is it telling me? Why did I do what I did? And then they present their findings to their peers. We have a poster session every year where the students put their stuff up on posters, much like they would do in an undergraduate research facility, where they explain their projects, they go through and they assess each other's projects, they have to defend their research. And it's really very exciting to see how they just get in there, they get their hands dirty, and they're willing to learn by doing and explaining and helping each other from all aspects of science.
Greiner, now I'm going to talk a little bit about the opportunities that are afforded to students because they participate in the International Baccalaureate. We, as I mentioned earlier, encourage writing essays because we know that that's where the assessments are leading, and we know that the students need to be strong essay writers when they go to college. And so we enter many essay contests, and we have been very fortunate to win first place in most of those essay contests. We also were selected to be diplomats at the NATO Challenge at ODU, for example. We have been chosen as winners with the Suffolk Youth Commission as outstanding leaders because of the fact that they are in situations that they have to be leaders. And those are just a few of the examples of our having gotten these opportunities. Just to show you a few statistics, over the years, as has mentioned, we graduated the first class in 2012, when the top number indicates how many were registered for the examinations, and that would be a combination of the diploma candidates, the juniors who may have taken one course in the junior year, and our certificate students. Then they indicate the number of students who actually achieved the diploma, and then the number of students who achieved the certificate. Then there's the average of the diploma number. That's all done, let's see, to explain it simplistically. One should have a minimum of 24 points, which would be four points for each of the subjects, and then that would equal somewhere around the four-point grade. And then there are the number of subjects that they actually tested in that particular testing year. For the last three years, we've been accepted to many colleges. We're pleased with that. The red indicates the colleges that some of our students from the senior class this year have been accepted to. There are many of the students who have not yet brought forth their documentation to indicate where they've been accepted. Some are waiting for the May 1st deadline to find out. Typically, we have scholarship awarded to us, and that usually is from like $1.6 million to $2 million in scholarships for our senior class. Our teachers are well-prepared to teach in the IB. They are required to go to training so that they can learn the IB strategies and international curriculum requirements. Yearly, we have regional networking sessions for individual disciplines, and the teachers attend that so that they can discuss the curriculum with other teachers who teach the same thing in our region. They are required to go online to an online curriculum center where all of the information about the IB is located. We are fortunate to have an IB planning period where we can all meet to discuss procedures, to discuss student progress and interventions that can be put in place if we are having students who struggle, and to develop our interdisciplinary lessons. We also have a lot of support for the students and their parents. We have several orientations during the year. We have a summer academy for our upcoming freshmen. We have a meet and greet for our rising 11th graders when they're going to be in the IB for the first time. We do college preparatory sessions for our juniors. We have a mentor program where the older students mentor the younger students. We have peer tutoring, where again, the older students tutor the younger students who need assistance. There is classroom orientation, and then we have monthly newsletters that go out to all of the students and their parents. As you can see from our calendar of events, we have many things that do occur during the year. I'd like for you to perhaps put on your calendars our April 20th event, which is our visual arts exhibit that we have, which showcases what has been done in our visual arts class, and May the 27th, when we celebrate with the IB students and their families the fact that they have completed the criteria for the diploma.
Questions before we move to the next program? Are there questions about the IB program for Ms. Carol Dickens or Mr. Dewey?
Yes, Ms. Dickens, if you could come back to putting, please. Now, I noticed that there's a large drop-off from the sophomore to the junior, from the pre-IB to the IB program. Is there a specific set of circumstances that have to be met for the pre-IB to get in the IB, or do they automatically get invited to the IB program if they...
Once you're in the IB program as a rising 9th grader, you are considered an IB member straight through. The drop-off does not represent a drop-off from one year to the next, but rather each individual class. In other words, there were more students in one class than there were in another, but that does not indicate a drop-off.
Now, is there a committee that decides every entry, everybody who's going to enter the program?
Yes.
And there is a committee. Who are the members of the committee, please?
They would be teachers.
They would be teachers, and everybody goes through that committee process, correct?
Yes.
Even those that have to come in late in the year?
No one comes in late in the year. Everyone has to be accepted at the beginning.
They all are accepted in the summer or previous school year?
During this time of year.
Okay.
Other questions for Ms. Carol?
What teacher training programs are available, and are they attended regularly by the IB teachers?
Teachers are required to do one major training, and that would be available anywhere in the United States. We generally pick areas that are close to us so that we won't have to worry about so much transportation.
They have to be certified in these meetings?
They have to attend the training.
They have to attend the training?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
I'd like to ask a question. Are all of the candidates required to take the IB test?
If they are, yes. IB diploma students, yes, they're required to take the test.
Every one of them have to take the test?
Yes.
Well, in last year, there were, you said, a number of candidates. Were 21 who were to take the test, is that right?
Right.
And 11 of them?
11 of them achieved the credit that was necessary in order to receive the IB diploma.
But that's 50%. 52%. Well, in 2012, that looks like it's more like 75 or 76%.
Right, correct.
Do you have any reason to explain why it's going down?
Well, it's not going down. We had a decline for that particular year, it is true. We had several students in that class who missed the diploma by one point.
The diploma is, what, 25 points?
24 points.
24 points, and what's the maximum score?
44.
44? So do you think those are good scores, the 28, 29, and 27 out of 44? Would that be, is that normal throughout, say, the, you know, in the other school systems? Are these scores acceptable scores, do you think?
They are acceptable scores, yes.
Are they similar to other school systems' scores?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Dickens.
I'm Dawn Roundtree, and I'm the Engineering Teacher at Nansman River High School. The Pathway to Engineering Program, which was established at Nansman River in 2010, offers a variety of options for the students where their core classes, they can make, they have a little bit more of a freedom for their selection. But we offer them five specific engineering courses that they take throughout their time at Nansman River High School. And in each of these courses, they are given a combination of high school-type and high school-style instruction mixed with collegiate-style instruction. And we also include resources where they have to gain their information in their notes online and things like that, so they begin to learn some of that autonomy that they have to have as they grow older. In 9th grade, when the students enter the program, they start with Introduction to Engineering Design. That class is a class where the students learn about the engineering design process, reverse engineering, and they utilize three-dimensional modeling skills with software that is used in industry. At Nansman River High School, we use Autodesk and Venner. In 10th grade, they take Principles of Engineering. These students explore various branches of engineering, ranging from mechanical, electrical, thermodynamics, structural control systems, and ballistics. In 11th grade, they actually take two courses. The first one is Digital Electronics, and in that course, they explore electrical systems more in depth. And the students start with physical circuits at the beginning of the school year, and then transition into computer simulations where they design circuits with specific logic applications in mind. They also get to learn fun things like binary code, and I think that's fun. But they also, in 11th grade, they also take Civil Engineering and Architecture. And in this course, students study both residential and commercial architectural, architecture. And the emphasis is not just based on design, but students also learn about building codes, zoning ordinances, and environmental and social impacts. When it comes to those first four courses, at the end of each course, they take a final exam. And this exam is given through Project Lead the Way, and that is where there are many colleges across the country where based on the student's score in the course and what they receive as a final exam grade, similar to an AP exam, they could possibly receive college credit. So those are the courses where students actually take a standardized test through Project Lead the Way, and the Virginia Department of Education accepts that as an industry credentialing. The final course is Engineering Design and Development, and that is senior year. It's very similar to a college senior capstone course. And in this course, students are sorted into groups where they identify a problem, conduct research, design and build a solution. And the project ends with a presentation to a panel of people from the engineering community. Last year, we had problems such as people carrying too many grocery bags, tangled headphone wires, and a safer way to store heated styling hair care products. This year's projects include potted plants falling over, fogging swimming goggles, back problems from moving heavy objects, and converting high-heeled shoes to flats just by moving a little thing and then being done instead of having to carry two separate pairs of shoes. With this course and the presentation, it's a very different style, of course. The kids aren't just, the students are not just sitting in the room listening to lecture. They're actually living that course as an engineer would in that designing community. These are some pictures of some of the things that the students have done in the classroom. We do labs where they're actually physically figuring out what the information is and learning the mathematic principles behind it, and also being able to physically feel what we mean by a concept that we're talking about. We also have done surveying outside so that we can understand differential leveling and see how that does. One of the pictures that's not there that we also do is we also do soil testing, so we get our hands dirty. Our current enrollment, we have 22 seniors, and three of them are enrolled in the Paul D. Camp Community College Associates Program, and they are intending to graduate from Paul D. Camp Community College in May, pending their high school graduation. We have 21 juniors, 22 sophomores, and 24 freshmen. This slide shows a little bit about where we have gone. We've graduated our first class, and the logos that you see are the colleges that my college freshmen are attending, and they are very excited. I have gotten, in just one semester, I have received a lot of information back from many of those students. And one of them was a picture of their homework and saying, "Look, I did this in 9th grade." Or, "That video we watched in IED was on my final exam in my engineering class. I'm so glad I survived POE and I paid attention. I'm smarter than the boys in my class. I get it." And they're excited. And even one of my students who's at Embry-Riddle, he is studying aerospace engineering, and he told me that thanks to some of the information that he learned in the program, he was able to take a CLEP test, and he was not given credit for, but excused from a prerequisite for one of his classes. So he was very excited about that. Some of those majors from the class of 2014 include aerospace engineering, mechanical engineering, biomedical engineering, biology with pre-med, electrical engineering, computer science, urban planning, and physics. This year, I also received information from our guidance counselor, over $1.1 million was reported to our guidance office specifically from those Project Lead the Way students of college scholarship offerings. The class of 2015, as of today, and actually as of a couple weeks, 100% of them have all been accepted to at least one college. And that is very exciting. We have a board up in the room that says who's going where. And some of those students have already committed and paid their down payment, and to those colleges, we will be sending students to Virginia Tech, Radford University, Christopher New... Newport University, the University of Wisconsin, Virginia Commonwealth University, and the University of Alabama. And as of today, just my twenty-two seniors from Project Lead the Way have been offered over two point three million dollars in scholarship money, and it's still coming. So their intended majors in college include mechanical engineering, physics, electrical engineering, computer science, civil engineering, environmental science, architecture, and biomedical engineering.
Questions for Ms. Roundtree?
I noticed you have eleven schools that yearly, students from last year graduated attended. What happened to the other ten or eleven students?
Some of them, multiple students are going to those.
Okay, do you have any students from that graduating class that did not go to college?
We had one, and he actually is working, we actually had two, but one is now in college. He enrolled this semester. He had left and moved with his family, and so going to a new state, he wanted to wait until he got acclimated. He started this semester, so he's officially in college. The other one has been working, and the business that he is working for is actually sending him to Tidewater Community College next year, with a promise of a job, and they will be paying for him to go to college.
That's good.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Of these four years, I mean, that you have in your current enrollment, just out of curiosity, what percentage of each of these groups are girls?
I don't really have that written down, and that's one thing that I didn't have.
Oh, it's okay, I'm not trying to pin you down. I'm just curious about...
We range between my junior class actually has the lowest percentage, and in that class, it's a sixth of the class. We have, we have five girls in that class, so it's actually, it's about a quarter of the class.
I just think it would be great if more girls would get into engineering.
Yes, this, my freshman class and my sophomore class have a large number of girls, and we, the freshman class is a little over a third of the class's girls.
I'd like to commend Ms. Roundtree. Each summer, in order to teach a class, she had to go to school for at least two weeks at Old Dominion University to be prepared to teach, so likely IB teachers had to have training, the Project Lead the Way teachers do as well.
You mentioned end-of-course tests or whatever that they take. How do they do on those? Are we holding our own? Are we doing well?
We are above the state average when it comes to the pass rate. The, what I reported last year, our test that had the lowest pass rate was the Principles of Engineering test, the tenth-grade course. It's actually one of the most difficult courses for the students, and that was still above what I liked, and it was right around, it was in the eighty percent pass rate.
Are our students chosen for the Project Lead the Way?
The students are chosen in a similar, in a similar way. There is a committee that reviews the applications, and this year, there are at least eight engineers evaluating the essay portions of the applications.
What happens if a student doesn't make the grade in their sophomore, junior year?
If a student drops below a two point seven GPA, they are put on academic probation, and there is a meeting held with myself, our guidance counselor, Mrs. Crewe, and our assistant principal, Mrs. Bibbo, and we also consult Ms., where's she at? Ms. Bass? Oh, there she is. Okay, we also consult with Ms. Bass, and we put together a plan for, a plan of action for that student of what they need to do to prepare academically, and if they still do not increase that, to that GPA, then they are removed from the program.
Every teacher in the program is required to get certain training?
I am currently the only teacher in the program, and I am certified by Project Lead the Way to teach all five courses.
Every teacher in that program is required to get training.
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
And last, but certainly not least, we have our biomedical sciences program. I'll let her introduce herself.
Good evening. My name is Sarah McDonald. I'm the biomedical science program teacher at Lakeland High School.
Speak into that. Speak into that.
This is the first year. This is a picture of my, my kids. They are very hard-working, they're very exciting, and I don't have as much data as everybody else, because this is our first year. So this year, the kids started their journey with the first course offered by Project Lead the Way called Principles of Biomedical Science. I refer to it as PBS. The students are exploring concepts in biology and medicine to determine the factors that led to the death of a fictitious character named Anna Garcia. The students started the course with learning crime scene investigation, the practices and procedures, and while students are examining her untimely passing, they are also examining her medical record, and they are reviewing ways that they could have extended her life. All activities allow the students to go in-depth and conduct research into human physiology, biology, medicine, and research. Next year, the students will be taking the second course, Human Body Systems, HBS, where they will examine human body's mechanisms. They will be using special instructional materials consisting of modeling clay called mannequins. This will be to build organs and tissues along with software to collect data to monitor body functions. They'll take on the role of biomedical professionals and solve real-world medical cases. The third year of the program, the students are going to be taking medical interventions. This is my favorite so far. This course allows the medical history of a fictitious family to be examined, and they will be specifically examining immunology, how to detect and fight infection, as well as studying surgical practices. They will analyze genetics to screen human DNA and learn of cancer treatments, the various options, research interventions, and procedures for organ failures, organ system failure. The final course is a capstone course, very similar to colleges', biomedical innovations. Students will build on all the knowledge and skills that they have received through the other courses, and they will be working independently, designing a project that will be overseen by a mentor advisor from a university, medical facility, or research institution. Students in this will address issues ranging from public health to engineering to solving problems in the area of clinical research and physiology. So here, the current enrollment is twenty students, and we will, are currently conducting the search for the next twenty. So we provide student support when they, the counselors are available for peer tutoring, I'm sorry, peer guidance. I provide tutoring opportunities for the students, and for starting this course, they actually had to undergo a freshman orientation where I introduced them to the lab and certain pieces of equipment that they will be using, and they actually came in with their families, and we had a cookout-themed dinner, and we played team-building exercises, and we discussed their community service options, and we continue to discuss that. So about the training for Project Lead the Way, all teachers are required to have rigorous training. The Project Lead the Way programs, both engineering and biomedical science, go through a intense training which starts with a pre-training course. It's called readiness training. The core training is two weeks long, and it is going to be offered anywhere in the United States. Teachers will complete the course that the student is going to take, doing the same activities as the students. The teachers will experience the same challenges that the students are going to face, and this training allows for better Project Lead the Way STEM methodology to be delivered to the students and enhance learning. After core training, there's always training available, and in order to stay current, it's kind of mandatory, so opportunities to attend summits and conferences and other types of professional development are offered by Project Lead the Way. And that's all I have.
How many students do you have presently now in the first-year programs? Do you still have the twenty that started the program?
Yes.
They're all sticking out?
They're all hanging in there, yeah.
Good, great.
They're working really hard.
Now, are there any other teachers other than you that are involved in this program?
Yes, I'm just the only teacher.
The core teachers, like English, math, science, or the other specialized, there are other specialized teachers?
They have their regular core teachers, but I took the Project Lead the Way course. I'm certified to teach the course for biomedical science, and I will continue training as soon as I can.
Are you the one that teaches the structural courses in the Lead the Way and the medical science and health field? Is that correct? Okay, good. Do your teachers get a common planning period?
We have a science head.
So you're the only one to be held accountable, right?
So far.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Ms. McDonald, I just, you said that your students are interested in community service projects? I would like to mention one for your students if they're interested. In a couple of weeks, in the twenty-eighth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth of February, in Kings Fork Middle School, there's going to be what's called the Moms Project, where dentists from all over the area come in and in one day treat many, many, many patients. They did it, they came last year, it was very successful, and a friend of mine who's a dentist, who's my dentist, said that they are looking for volunteers, and I don't know whether any Suffolk students volunteered last year, but they need volunteers to help them set up the twenty-seventh in the, that Friday afternoon, and who are willing to come very early Saturday morning and help them, the dentists, get their stuff in and set up. If you think your students are interested, could you contact Dr. Whitney, because he's on that committee and can help them get involved in that project? And any other science students, Ms. Walsh, I was going to mention it to you, too, that might be interested in participating in this very successful project? It's amazing to watch these dentists, in one day, do everything they do.
That's true.
Well, that's wonderful.
Absolutely, I can help you.
Then, please contact Dr. Whitney, and, because we need volunteers for that, and I'd like to see Suffolk students do it.
I had an opportunity to observe in Ms. McDonald's program in December, and the students were making models of DNA, and I thought the most unique portion of it was that she is teaching the students to speak publicly and present their presentations, and I had a very enlightening class period with her, and I want to say thank you for what you're doing.
I mentioned three people, if I could. I did not introduce them earlier. They work closely with our specialty programs. First, Ms. Bass, Gail Bass, who was mentioned earlier, works closely with the engineering program at Nansman River. Dr. Katherine Walsh, who works closely with our biomedical, and I also want to thank Mr. Mitnick for his involvement, most recently with our biomedical sciences program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dewey, and thank you to each of the teacher presenters, as well as the coordinator. You know, I can remember having served as assistant superintendent and deputy superintendent for eight years, how we talked about wanting to have a specialty program in each of our high schools. For so many years, we've talked about differentiating instruction within our schools. Well, this is a good example of differentiating our programs, trying to meet the needs of our students, and making certain that opportunities are there for them to choose what they're interested in and be successful as well.